Good afternoon and welcome to our Glendale City Council Workshop. This meeting is for council members to review and discuss important issues, projects, and future council meeting agenda items. It's a work-study session only and allows the council to hear input from city staff. No action will be taken at this workshop, and there will not be an opportunity for public comment. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
A good afternoon and welcome to Glendale City Council Workshop Session December 13, 2022. This meeting is called to order. Tenant's roll call is not necessary because everybody's here. So if you would take note, that'd be awesome. With that said, can you just go ahead and introduce item number one? Let's get rolling.
Performance-based contracts.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. We have five items today on our workshop agenda for discussion. The first one will be led by our Director of Field Operations, Michelle Watanke, and our Deputy Director of Field Operations, Charles Thomas, regarding performance-based contracts.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Today, we're going to update you on performance-based contracts and provide some additional information. We were here with you back in October, and you requested we come back. So this is just a follow-up and to finalize that presentation from October. Just to be completely clear, the purpose of the presentation today, we're going to ask council for consensus to negotiate the contracts with the vendors and bring that back forward to council for council approval. So that's all we're asking for today. It's that short, that simple. And I just want to remind you, a performance-based contract is a contract which is funded based upon the savings. So we can take the savings of these projects in energy and electricity alone and use that to pay for these projects. There's other ways to do it. What this does is just give staff and our city employees here another tool in their toolbox, another way to complete capital and necessary improvement projects across the city. As kind of a reminder, this is the steps we've taken with council. But prior to that first September 25th, 2018, when council entered into an agreement, staff did meet with four different companies that performed these services. We came forward with the two that we thought were the best. And an example of who we kind of excluded from that was, if you're doing this project around the house and you're looking at your appliances and looking at which energy-efficient appliances might be the best, you may not want to select somebody like Kenmore, which may be really focused on a brand and try and sell you their equipment. So that's one thing we looked at. We wanted companies that wouldn't be tied to a brand, but would be looking out for our best interest. So in September 2018, we entered into a contract with Midstate Energy to do just energy performance contracting services. In October 2019, the same agreement with McKinstry for those same services. We discussed with council in March of 2021, performance-based contracts and the preliminary assessments. So the preliminary assessments, we had given a group of properties to each of these companies and asked them, "Do what you do best. You evaluate them from an energy perspective. You tell us everything you could do at these locations to potentially save energy." And that's what they came back with, was these preliminary assessments. Then on June 8th, 2021, staff was authorized to proceed with these investment-grade audits. And these two binders we have here in front of us, they each represent an investment-grade audit from one of the companies. So that's the level of effort and the detail that we've got about each of these projects. We came back in October to discuss these investment-grade audits, and we're here today just to finalize that discussion and hopefully get council consensus on the next step. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Charles to get into some detail on what we've done and where we're going.
Hello, Mayor and council. This is, this next slide is the visual representation of the actions taken as Mr. Watanke laid out right before this. In 2019, council approved a contract to allow us to start working with McKinstry to determine which buildings would be a good candidate for investment-grade audit. Midstate's preliminary assessment was already underway at that time. In June of 2021, we moved forward with the investment-grade audit for council approval. And today, we're going to be asking to move forward with the contract stage to negotiate these contracts and then come back to council for approval at that time. This is a review of what we looked at in October. This is a review of the combined projects that we proposed back in October. If approved, we will be touching about 22 sites between both projects. The 16.9-year payback that we discussed is based on the funding that we don't already have approval on. Have about $2 million in our current CIP. It's already approved by council. We will be asking for, based on this project and these numbers, we'll be asking for roughly $8 million. And that's what the 16.9-year payback is based off of, the $8 million that we would be asking for. There was an additional question asking why one company had solar in their scope and the other one did not. Both companies looked at solar in the beginning at the investment, or the, excuse me, the preliminary assessment stage. At the time of the assessment, the cost of solar was very high, and the incentives from the utility companies were pretty low. So based on that, one of the companies decided on their own to leave solar out of their project and focus on things that have a quicker payback and leverage the savings to update some of the equipment so we can continue to provide high-level of service to citizens.
Hold on a sec. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Who gets the, if there are rebates or incentives for solar, who gets it on a performance-based contract? The contractor or the city?
Mayor, members of council, council member Tomachov. It does depend on the contract terms, and that's part of what we would be negotiating when we go back to, if we get approval today, we would negotiate that at the time of the contract review.
Okay. And then, Mayor, I do have another question. I don't remember, I think you talked about it in October, but what is the difference between payback with or without capital contribution? Could you just walk through that quickly again?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, council member Tomachov. The 16.9-year payback and the capital contribution is capital dollars that we already have approved in our CIP. So we were planning on replacing the chillers at certain buildings and other equipment at other buildings that we already planned in our CIP. When the investment-grade audit happened, those projects overlapped. So the contractors also suggested that we should replace those same pieces of equipment that we already planned on replacing. So we would just take that, take that fund that we already have in the CIP and lump it into this project and do it as one.
Okay, thank you.
There were additional questions during our last visit, so we wanted to take some time and address those questions as well. So one of the questions was, was maintenance included in the solar cost? The answer says yes. There's three years of maintenance built into the solar cost, and then there's an inverter replacement at year 15. This does not include cleaning, because that would be an operational cost. So if we decided to do cleaning, and all these, all these small details will be discussed during our, during our contract negotiation. But if we decided that we wanted to include more maintenance years or cleaning and/or cleaning, that would be part of our operational budget, not the capital budget. The other, another question was, was there O&M savings? Estimated O&M savings would be $84,000 annually. I want to take a little bit of time on that because O&M savings can be defined different ways by different folks. But when we looked at this, we wanted to make sure that we took the materials and contractor costs as O&M savings and not our technicians' time, fuel, vehicle, uniforms, and all those things, because that would, that would indicate that we would be trying to reduce staff, and we're not trying to do that. We want to take the time that we save and allocate those, that time to something else that we can do within the city to provide services to our, to our citizens and the rest of the city. So if we were to say, talk about lights, replacing the light in here because the ceiling is so high would be a much larger effort than it would be by replacing an office light that you can just use a six-foot ladder to do. So trying to determine, you know, how much does it cost to replace a light in council chambers versus how much it would cost to replace a light in the mayor's office is, is pretty difficult to quantify and add guarantees to that. So what we, what we did is we looked at, you know, when we have park lights, we usually have a contractor go take care of those park lights. So we can look at how many times the contractor came and replaced a light bulb at a park, or how many times they changed a ballast at a park. And we can pull those numbers out. Those are real numbers that we would save by not replacing those lights with a contractor year over year over year. So we did not include technician time, fuel time, vehicle time, uniforms, all that stuff that's baked into an employee or, or service was left out of the O&M cost, and we just did materials and contractor costs for the O&M. Another question was, did staff check with other cities and organizations? During our initial interviews with the contractors, we checked with other organizations at that time to, to see if they did projects with them that were viable. We didn't ask, at the initial interviews, we didn't ask for case studies or anything like that. After our last council workshop in October, we did go back and get additional information from those organizations. I won't bore you by reading all those, all those cities and organizations that went through and took advantage of performance-based contracting. But what I will say is that these cities and organizations did achieve the savings that was presented to them, and in many cases, they exceeded the savings that was presented to them during their investment-grade audit. I'd also like to highlight the city of Austin, Texas, because this is one of the projects that we reviewed that's very similar to what we're, what we're discussing today, and I'll go through that in the next few slides. So on the left, this is kind of a project summary of the city of Austin, and then on the right is what we're proposing for city of Glendale. City of Austin has some specific goals as it relates to climate equity, and because of that, they did a project that's very similar to what staff is presenting here today. They have a $10.1 million of self-funded project with a projected annual energy savings of $425,000. If you look at the Glendale comparison, we're very close to them with $478,487 of annual utility savings. Austin's about 13 sites. Glendale's 20-plus sites, I think 22 was, was the number that we, that we looked at. There's also rebate dollars and O&M savings as part of their project as well. Overall, their simple payback is 16.6 years. If we look at ours, the numbers are very similar. The simple payback on the funding that we don't already have council approval on is 16.9 years, and the projects cover over 20 sites. Keep in mind, there are some infrastructure corrections that we must make that increase those, those payback years, but they still compare to the city of Austin. Also, our 16.9 years, our 16.9 years do not include estimated O&M savings and potential rebates. So this is what Mr. Phelps alluded to last, last meeting when he mentioned worst-case scenario. In this scenario for our project, the 16.9-year payback on the roughly $8 million that we're asking for will go down once those other numbers are factored in. So I'll, I'll run through those just so we can get, you know, full picture of what we're talking about. So a lot of those numbers are hard to quantify. We discussed that about O&M. But baking those numbers in for context, if we, if we subtract our one-time potential rebates of $50,000, and that's a conservative number, $50,000, we would be requesting about $8,015,000. Adding the O&M savings, annual O&M savings, and the energy savings together equals $562,487 of annual energy savings. Total energy, excuse me, total annual savings. If we divide that by the $8,015,000 that we're, that we're talking about after those rebates get pulled out, those one-time rebates, we're talking about a 14.25-year payback on the investment that we're asking for. Again, these numbers are conservative, and there are many other potential rebates that could come in in the future to help us offset those costs, but we still need to talk about those with budget finance. There might be a potential of the Inflation Reduction Act helping out with this, but again, we need to talk to budget finance and talk to some other professionals to make sure that that's a viable option. But we're starting to hear through the industry that that could be potential help for the As part of Austin's decision-making, they also reviewed the cost of inaction. For this project, they faced losing $220,000 of one-time utility rebates, increased construction costs, loss of O&M savings, and loss of utility savings. In the first year, the cost of them doing nothing would have been over $1.1 million. As construction and utility costs increased, the average cost of doing nothing was about $1 million per year. Based on these numbers, the city of Austin decided to proceed with this project. I'd also like to note that Austin's project had about $2.7 million of what they called avoided CIP budget allocation. Austin leveraged their relationship with the vendor to not only do projects that save energy, but also complete $2.7 million worth of projects that would otherwise be many different individual projects allocated throughout their CIP plan. That relationship between Austin and the vendors had procurement, commissioning, project management, construction, and design built into that relationship. So what that does is relieve a lot of pressure off the customer and provide one main point of contact for the complex project that they had on their plate. Our proposed project has about $2 million of CIP project blended in, and that's what we discussed earlier into it as well. And having that relationship for us would be beneficial to deliver a quality project while still providing those other services that field operations provide to the rest of the city. So we come back around to final steps. Our final step would be to negotiate the contract for each vendor and bring that back to council approval, for council approval. It's a, it's going to be a complex, very complex contract with both vendors. We have a lot, a lot of detail to comb through, a lot of projects to review. We want to bring back the best product for council to review, and our goal is always to not impact any planned capital projects that are in the CIP. So today, we would just like to ask Mayor, council, if we can proceed to the contract portion, negotiate the two contracts, and then bring that back for voting session. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this second presentation was much more robust, and I do appreciate it. You did an excellent job. And I'm going to support moving forward, but I would ask that at the time that the contracts are presented to us, you also have talked to budget and finance and have a plan to show us where the additional funding, other than what is already earmarked, will be coming from. But I support it, and I, I would like you to move forward. Thank you.
The, the solar part, I'm just curious because once you, if you negotiate now and then there's further incentives or other things with the Infrastructure Act, grants and things like that available, do we forego that opportunity, at least on these projects? As you said, there may be some opportunities for more rebates and things that are going to be part of the infrastructure as it's developing, and whether or not there may be even, you know, grant funding available. But once it's, the contract's negotiated, then, then, then we, we leave that behind, at least for that, for these projects? Is that right? Or how does that work? Like if some other thing becomes available after that, because the project's not completed, it may be eligible for, but it wasn't in our contract? I guess is what I'm trying to ask.
Mayor, members of council, council member Tomachov. Because we have an investment-grade audit, it, it is suggested that we stay within the scope of the investment-grade audit. But there is a potential, and again, that, that will come down to contract negotiation, but there is a potential that you could come back with a change order to the projects that we have laid out and add solar at that time as a separate change order. But we have to discuss how we fund that change order. So it is possible.
Mayor, councilman Tomachov, if I might try. On this slide, Mr. Thomas shows $50,000 in potential rebates to the city. That potential rebate is based upon calendar year 2022 and an APS rebate. The reason we showed as potential, and I think what you're getting at is, before we negotiate the final contract, we want to contact both utility agencies and find out what rebates might be. And then we want to leave the contract open such that if there is other possibilities, the city could invest in those or obtain that. And that's why it becomes a complex negotiation, is to make sure that we've got those options in there. So Mr. Thomas's current role is to, if we move forward with this, is to then contact those utility companies, find out what rebates are available, what might be coming available. Let's not do something in December knowing new rebates make them out in January, but also to do that research on the, this Inflation Reduction Act to determine with budget and finance on what those potentials might be, to make sure that we get the best contract for the city, but also to allow that if other funding comes available, we can supplant that and put that in. So I think that's what we're trying to get at with. This isn't a simple sign a contract and pay them money. We want to make sure that we have money coming back to the city if utilities offer those rebates or there's other options, such as grant funding available.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I was trying to understand it, like what kind of flexibility are we afforded in, you know, in this type of a contract? My other question is, and I know, I mean, obviously, it depends on the type of projects, but I noticed a pretty big disparity between the O&M combined and the, and the rebates. Obviously, the rebates, you know, whenever they did this, there were probably bigger rebates available there were. We got a really big rebate on LED lighting, I mean. So is that what the big, and the big disparity is probably between the rebates, but why so much in the, in the O&M? Does it just depend on the projects, or are we pursuing higher-cost O&M projects?
Texas and Arizona.
Mr. Mayor and council, councilman Tomachov. As Mr. Thomas was explaining, our annual O&M savings, we went with hard costs. We went with what's the cost of the light bulb, and how many times over the 15 years would you replace the light bulb? We did not put any of our soft costs in. We did not put any of our employee expenses. If we had used our employee expenses, our O&M savings would be higher than Mr. Gibson and Ms. Rios would actually take those people from us so we could guarantee those savings. We didn't want to factor them in. We, we think there's other work that those employees can be doing, and that's why our O&M savings is lower. And then the rebates are just simply what the utility companies, Austin, Texas, Texas offered different rebates that year than Arizona's offering right now and our utility companies.
So Mayor, is there a standard way to calculate the O&M savings, or is it just each city does it their own way, or seems like?
There, Mayor and councilmembers, councilman Tomachov, there is no, there is a standard if you go to like IFMA or BOMA. It's an intense calculation, and we didn't want to rely on it because we're not cutting those costs. So ours is an estimate. Our annual O&M savings is not part of the contract. We are not saying we're going to cut that, and that's part of our payback. We just wanted to simply show you, we asked them, the two individual companies, what would be some of the hard costs we would save through O&M, through replacing these lights and other things, and they came back with approximately $84,000 a year.
Okay. And then one final question, Mayor, if I could. So with consensus to negotiate the contracts, would the contracts be brought back just to a voting meeting, or would they be brought back in a, in a workshop exercise where we could actually kind of be walked through this type of a contract?
Mayor and councilmembers, I, I would intend them to come back to workshop. I think there's enough things that we would want to make sure the council's very comfortable with before we just take them simply to vote.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to be clear, the two of you, the councilmember and yourself, talked about it. $84,000 on MNO savings is, is not a lot. It's a lot of money, but it's not a lot. But I just want to be clear for the citizens who are, who are watching. This program isn't intended to, to, to seize savings in, in O&M. It's more of a energy efficiency and utility savings. That's what we're trying to accomplish here. I just want the citizens to know that while there's an $84,000 savings, not, that's not what the program is built around. It's more of what we talked about in utility savings, and, and those savings are huge. So, and I agree with councilman Clark, the more robust presentation helps. I just want to be clear with our citizens. Thank you.
Do you have anything? Is there a consensus to support?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you. Item number two, please.
Discussion of Heroes Park Fields.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide the second staff report today on item number two, will be led by Jim Burke, our Director of Public Facilities, Recreation, and Special Events.
Mayor, members of the council, it's really a pleasure to be here today and talk about this significant project for a major regional park here in Glendale in the next phase of the development of this project. We're going to give the council an update on where we're at on the project, and then we're going to ask for consensus about the financing piece of it, which is use of DIF, Development Impact Fees, to help this project move forward. Today, I've asked John Kennedy, our Assistant Director in the Department, to make the presentation to you, and will be available for questions.
Turn your mic on if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Mayor and council, very excited to be here to talk about an exciting project, further development within Heroes Regional Park. So working off the original Parks and Recreation Master Plan that was adopted in May of 2021, we took the conceptual plan of Heroes Regional Park and worked with a consultant to come up with the concept plan that you see in front of you here on slide two. So in this particular version, you'll see a list of 13 different amenities that are listed. I'll highlight a few of them for you. This shows three lighted multi-use sports fields there on the north part. I did mini pitch. If you're not familiar with a mini pitch, as the name suggests, it's a smaller version of a soccer pitch, a hardened surface. It's ideal for skill development and a faster, more intensive experience for soccer. Also included are eight lighted pickleball courts, which, as we all know, pickleball continues to be an extremely popular trend. It shows a space for a lighted food truck area, as well as a two-acre dog park along the south portion of this particular plan. So in working with the consultants, the consultant estimate for that particular plan came in at $17.3 million. Again, that's not a hard cost. That's the design estimate. So coming to, looking at what our funding availability is, we have $7.5 million in the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funding identified. And what we're coming to seek council consensus on today is potentially utilizing $4 million in Development Impact Fees, or DIF fees, from fiscal year 2024 to bring a potential funding budget availability for, of $11.5 million. So assuming, starting, using that as a, as a new starting point, the $11.5 million, we went back to the consultant and developed another concept plan that breaks this project down into phases. The colored-in phases are the ones that would be included into Phase One, that we kind of looked at before. The, the grayed-out areas, such as the maintenance area, the mini pitch, and a third, the third lighted sports field would be future phases, depending on, you know, what the direction we go through. Again, this is just a concept. It would change based on, as we go through the process with the designer, you know, could change a little bit from what this shows here. So in, kind of in summary, this is consistent with the, the public process that went through for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Again, these are design estimates, not a final cost. A final cost would come, would be determined once we bid the project out. And again, we're requesting utilizing $4 million from the DIF budget, which would be utilized in the, in the CIP plan coming to, in the future. Our next steps, we've been working on a draft RFQ with our internal working group. We would look to advertise for the request for qualifications this week and next week with selection of a consultant and contract approval coming back to this board sometime in the spring. With that, we'd be glad to answer any questions.
Councilmember Burke.
Well, thank, let's see. Thank you, Mayor. I, I am really excited to see us put together another component of the uncompleted Heroes Park. I'm Park. I would ask council to support the allocation of $4 million in DIF funds. And when you think about where the DIF funds are coming from these days, they're coming from the western area of Glendale and the Yucca District. So I think it's appropriate that part of this money go back to our citizens in terms of putting in another component of Heroes Regional Park, which would be the sports fields. Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I couldn't see you. I have a question. So the other $5.8 million, I mean, obviously, the math here leaves us short, at least the estimate leaves us short. Is that in the CIP or what? Is there money marked in? I don't have the CIP. I didn't look at it, but...
Mayor and members of the council, Councilmember Tomachov. No, it's not currently in the CIP. Excuse me. And that is an estimate from our design team. What our intent would be, do a complete design of the concept plan, refine that number, get an actual bid, and then come back to council and approach, how do we want to do it with the funding if you approve it here today? And then we'll have to consider that gap and either schedule that for a future time or find another way to finance that. It is not currently in the CIP.
Okay. And this $17.3 million would be for all of the phases?
Everything that was shown in the concept plan John just presented, not the complete buildout of the park. There's still rec center, pool, additional parking in the south half that is not included in this, just that northern area.
Okay. All right. I'd hate for this to affect the ability to start on the facility, though. So that's why I was wondering. I didn't remember whether there was, you know, something marked in the CIP. I thought that this is in the CIP, but there's no, it's far enough out that there's no funding allocated for. Time is that...
Mayor and Council, right. We've identified a project in the out years, the CIP, 6 through 11, and it's a very large number for the rec center and the pool, but that is not what this project is.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. What is the cost for the design? Just design fees? Architectural design fees?
Mayor and members of the council, I don't have a cost for that yet. We're just doing an RFQ to get a proposal in, and that's what we'll bring back to you in the spring as a recommended contract with that actual cost. But it would come out of the $7.5 of the already approved ARPA funds.
Okay. I thought I heard it was $7.5 and seen something different here. It will come out of the $7.5.
Yes, sir.
And then the next question, just interested to know, does anyone here know how much ARPA funds is left for these types of projects or qualifying projects? Would you know, or maybe Ms. Rios could be able to answer that?
Mayor and council, I am not familiar with that.
Yeah. I'm just interested to know how much of those ARPA funds are remaining after the $7.5.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm going to have to answer that question with a, we'll get back to you on that, because off the top of my head, without any preparation, I can't tell you. We had all of the ARPA funds allocated to various different things in the strategy, and we do have some changes in that, and so we're in the process of kind of reconciling that, and then we're going to bring that back to council for you guys to take a look at.
And that's okay. I don't expect you to have it in your back pocket while you have a lot of things in your back pocket in your head there, not this one. And I was going to ask, I think what you're saying is you're going to bring back to us a report of total funds, where they went to, how much we spent?
That's correct.
Okay. I'd love to see that. When can you get us that information on the remaining ARPA without that whole report? Couple of days?
I don't know. Probably after the first of the year would be more reasonable at this point.
That's reasonable?
Yeah.
That's okay. Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Your consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Item 3.
Council item of special interest on potential reduction or elimination of the city's transaction privileged TPT sales tax on food for home consumption.
Mayor, members of the council, Assistant City Manager Vicki Rios will make a quick presentation on this council item of special interest.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, this is a council item of special interest from Councilmember Aldama regarding the potential reduction or elimination of what is commonly referred to as the food tax, but you'll hear me refer to it as a tax on food for home consumption, which is what it specifically is called in the tax code. The scope of this item, should we, should council, should council direct us to continue? This is kind of the scope. We would, we were asked to provide a history of the food for home consumption tax and all of the effective dates, information about which other cities have a tax on food for home consumption, the amount collected for food for home consumption for the past five fiscal years, the dollar amount of revenue we would lose for each 0.1% of a potential tax decrease, the amount of sales tax generated by construction contracting for the past five years, the amount of revenue generated by permitting fees for the past five years, and an analysis of what impact a reduction in the tax rate on food for home consumption would have on the budget and how the city would then make up for it. The steps involved in doing that, the beginning would be all data collection, then we would prepare to do a workshop with the council. We would then prepare to do a second workshop with the council on priorities for budget cuts, because we anticipate if this were to happen, we would have to make budget cuts. We would then be working with the departments to determine where they're going to cut their budget, again, sort of based on some discussion with council and their priorities. We anticipate then having additional workshops with the council on those budget cuts, doing some public outreach about what services and how they're going to be impacted, and then you would adopt a final budget in a voting meeting with those budget cuts in place. Again, our estimate of the time and level of effort that that would take would be approximately 27 to 31 weeks. It's basically a whole entire budget process, an estimated 762 man-hours. Now, I will say that that timeline assumes that it's not already part of our budget process. It's a separate effort, so it amounts to preparing two budgets if we're preparing one with and one without. So it's the same amount of time. It's just if we have to prepare a budget with it and without it, it doubles the amount of time it takes us to do a budget, is essentially what I'm telling you. Just the research portion of it alone, without a budget process, we're estimating would take approximately 80 hours. So what we're looking for from the council today, and I'm going to go back to this one, is whether or not the council wants us to undertake the effort to perform that scope, knowing that it will take approximately 762 man-hours and 27 to 31 weeks to do that.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. In this case, because I'm always supportive of our staff, but in this case, it seems to me that it's been made very complex to say that this takes 27 to 31 weeks, 762 man-hours. I don't, I just can't trust that at this second. And here's the thing, this is a simple request to bring information back for the council to study reducing the tax to the citizens. It shouldn't be that hard to study, looking at the possibilities of reducing a sales tax. It's a council bribe of interest. It's a workshop. I think you made it so complex that you've added the 27 to 31 weeks through the entire process. I'm asking, can you bring this information back so that we can have a robust conversation? That doesn't take 27 to 31 weeks. Most of this information, you don't have in your back pocket, but your team has it readily available. Maybe not readily available, takes some time, I'll give you that, but not 27 to 31 weeks or 762 man-hours. It's prudent that we look at this. I think I brought this up more than three times, and it's gone absolutely nowhere. I think it's absolutely worth bringing it back to a workshop. Today's just consensus to bring it back. No one is saying that we have to take three or four workshops. It can die today with no consensus. It can die at a workshop if we go to it. So I want the councilmembers to know that I'm simply asking for information of what it looks like to begin incrementally or eliminating it. This is the time to look at this. This is a third request of mine, and it's gotten no time whatsoever from this council. We rolled it into, city manager asked to have it rolled into the budget process, and I think we had a five-minute conversation and that was it. So I don't believe it takes 31 weeks or 762 man-hours. You guys have the information available to you, not overnight, but you do. And so this request is to have a workshop, not asking for three or four. If that's what it results in, again, it is absolutely worth to our citizens to take a look at this.
Mayor?
Yeah, hold on. Mr. Phelps?
Mayor, members of the council, so in putting together the council item of special interest, we, you know, there's a lot of ways we can construct a workshop. We assumed that at a workshop, talking about a reduction in revenues, that the obvious question might be from councilmembers, what's the impact on the operations, what would be the impact of that? So we thought you really couldn't make a decision and have a full, robust discussion without understanding what, potentially what it does to the operations. However, if that's not really the question, it's just really more, what is the amount of monies and how does that factor in? We could certainly simplify the scope down to reflect that. We just made an assumption that a discussion of eliminating of a revenue source, knowing that it likely would have long-term impact on the operations, the organization, that the council, we're trying to get ahead of what we anticipated, the council asking questions and saying, what does that mean for this? What does that mean for that? So that's why we included the body of work. We can certainly streamline that down and simplify it down at the request of the council.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, I just want to be clear to the citizens, because I've gotten many calls and many text messages and emails, people, our citizens are confused. I've been called and I've been asked, you want to reduce the food tax, but you'll completely eliminate our public safety. That's false. That is not true, folks. I'm the last person that wants to eliminate public safety. I can tell you that right now. We're talking about a 2.5% tax rate. 0.5% goes to transportation, 1.9% goes to general fund, and 0.1% goes to public safety. That's what goes to public safety. I'm asking for us to study whether or not this council wants to incrementally begin reducing that 2.5 sales tax or eliminating it. It's a conversation to be had. That's all I'm asking. It's not the full sales tax that everyone's used to, that the 7/10 sales tax that does go to public safety. This is not the same, folks. So I just want to be sure. It's a 2.5 with 0.1% of it going to public safety. And no, my intent is not to abolish our police or fire, absolutely not, far from the truth, not what I want to do. Thank you, Mayor.
Actually, hold on a second. Councilmember Hugh, and then you.
Thank you, Mayor. Oops. Apologize. Thank you, Mayor. As I'm looking at the steps, one of the first ones is a workshop and council priorities for budget cuts. I'm not prepared to move forward with discussion of any type of budget cuts for our employees and work with departments to determine budget cuts based on council priorities. That's not a priority of mine to cut budgets. I think it sends a wrong signal to our employees that we're going to do two budgets, and if we adopt one, they could be possibly losing their jobs because of the budget cuts. That's not what I believe this council is about. And I don't know what I would learn by discussing any further, because if we reduce money, we have to make budget cuts, and I'm not in favor of bringing it up. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachov?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, first, Mayor, if I could, set the record straight about the council not being willing to have this discussion, because I remember the discussion from our five-year forecast last January, when I had this discussion with Ms. Rios already. And there were five of us that were willing to have this discussion. Councilmember Tomachov, I said I was willing to have a discussion about scaling back the tax over time. Councilmember Melner agreed with having a discussion about an incremental decrease of the food tax. Councilmember Turner was more inclined to reduce the retail sales tax. Mayor Wires was willing to have a discussion at a future workshop. And Councilmember Clark favored holding a future discussion, recalling a request. There was nothing said by Councilmember Aldama at the time. Things have possibly changed since then, but there was a willingness for the council to have a discussion about scaling back the food tax. And this, you know, I mean, I get that this is a kind of a doom and gloom scenario. I mean, if we want to have a discussion, we could talk about, you know, a 10-year phase out, where you're talking about a million and a half dollars a year citywide. You could hold, easily hold public safety harmless in a budget reduction, a citywide budget reduction of a million and a half dollars. What was our, Ms. Rios, our operating budget for the last fiscal year? I don't remember off the top of my head. Somewhere around $400 million, something like that?
Mayor, members of the council, I believe the entire operating budget is about $550 million.
Okay. So my point is that a million and a half dollars out of a $500 million operating budget, that this council also has the authority and the ability to hold public safety completely harmless in any kind of budget cuts, and a million and a half dollars is absolutely doable and wouldn't put a huge dent in our operating budget. So, you know, I mean, I think the discussion is worth having, whether or not there's a consensus to actually do it, but saying that, you know, I mean, literally, a million and a half dollars citywide is not, you know, a fatal blow to our city budget. I mean, it's absolutely doable.
Mayor, could I clarify something? That's the entire operating budget, including water and solid waste and wastewater. The general fund, excuse me, operating budget is more in the neighborhood of $200, $200 million, $220, something like that?
Oh, I thought it was...
And so, and that's where this funding source is applicable to that funding source.
Okay. I thought it was closer to $300 million, but a million and a half dollars spread over the entire city. And the idea that it would have a direct effect on public safety is something that the council could say, no, we're not, we're not interested in affecting public safety in this. It's been an ongoing discussion, and my point was, is that, and I have this conversation with Mr. Phelps, too, is because I was under the impression we had a consensus to have this discussion in our budget preparation last year. And I thought we had adopted the policy that we were going to have this discussion every year at the beginning of our budget discussion in the five-year forecast. So I would be willing to at least look at a small cut of phase-out approach, whether or not I would be in favor of actually doing it, but I would be willing to look at a small, like a 10-year plan, to phase this out, because I think at some point, it's going to be done, it's going to be done anyway, whether we do it ourselves or not. And I said that last year in January, that I think at some point, the food tax is going to go away. Obviously, we still have to wait and see what the legislature does with this next session, whether that's something that they decide to do. But at this point, just having the discussion doesn't change anything. So, thank you.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Yeah, I'm going to go to Councilmember Clark next.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I've thought about this a lot ever since we had the conversation you referred to. And I think the general public perception out there is that we're making money hand over fist and that we can afford to talk about something like a cut in the sales tax on food. And you're right, it may happen, the legislature may force us to do it, and when that time comes, we're going to find out exactly how it's going to affect the city. But there's a misconception out there that with all of the construction sales tax we've been getting and the development fee monies, that we're just rolling in dough. But that's one-time money. And I get very nervous when we... And I get very nervous when we start to talk about cutting our operational budget, and you can't supplant it with one-time money. And that's the problem. So on further reflection, I'm not ready at this point to talk about operationally, because there would have to be cuts. All right, so you want to hold police and fire harmless. But there are 26 other departments that would be under the ax. And I don't want to give that message out to our employees right now. I think they've done a phenomenal job. I remember one thing that the city manager said, that when he first came on board, or just before he came on board, there were like 2,200 employees. And we've not reached that mark yet. We're down around 1,900. So we're doing a good a job, if not a better job, at managing the city and providing services with a reduction in staff. I've been through layoffs and shortening hours and all of that stuff before. It is very painful to everyone. So I'm not, I'm no longer supportive of moving forward with a discussion on the elimination of the sales tax on food until such a time as we're forced to do so by the legislature. Then we have no choice, and we'll have to figure out a way to do it. And it will hurt. It will hurt departments in this city. So, no, I'm not willing to move forward on this.
Mayor? Thank you, Mayor. I'll just go backwards here. I disagree with the city's making money hand over fist. But let me tell you who's not making money hand over fist is your citizens. Citizens of Glendale are not making money hand over fist. In fact, they're spending hand over fist for home consumable items or the food tax. Yeah, one person alone is not going to save a gazillion dollars, but it's having that conservative mindset for this city to start to reduce their look at that tax. And Councilmember Tomachoff, to your point, I do remember that conversation. And I didn't bring anything up, because I was pretty happy to hear that the council finally said, let's take a look at this and let's talk about it. Why did I have an item of interest? Because it was never talked about. While there was consensus, it fell under the rug again. This is why I brought it up again. That was my probably third time. This is my fourth time doing it. And to Councilmember Hugh, sir, there will be no job loss as a result of incrementally reducing this. Absolutely none at all. But again, without a workshop, with no discussion, we have no idea where we can make it up. And Councilmember Clark, you're right. It has to be sustainable. It can't be one-time money. But again, none of us know. The experts do, and the experts are in the room here. That's the democracy of this council, is we have workshops when the items are important to the citizens. And looking at this food tax, it's been in place since the 80s, and it wasn't sunset, and probably for good reason. But now is the time to look at it. This is the time. Inflation is through the ceiling. Food is through the ceiling. And your city has a food tax on you. The simple request is, let's have a robust conversation. No one is saying to lose jobs, we're not going to have anybody leave their jobs, City Glendale, because we're incrementally reducing the food tax. That is false. But again, none of us really know where we can get it from, but the experts can. And then to say that we're going to wait for the legislature to do it? Why? We don't have to do that. We have the power, as Councilmember Tomachoff said, we have the power to do it ourselves. And we can hold harmless public safety, as I said before. They don't have to be the target of it. Nobody's said that. But there's many ways, and I trust our staff, they can bring us that in a workshop. It doesn't take 27 weeks. Thank you, Mayor.
I guess, you want to go? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I've thought about this a lot as well over the past several years and have been a proponent to look into this and study it. Each year, the staff has brought forward these dollar amounts and told us how much it would cost to reduce the entire sales tax. And I understand we don't have the ability to reduce at all, because part of it's an initiative from the, that was put on the ballot, but I'm not much positive about that. And so my concern here is, as we've looked at those numbers in the past, we looked at them and said, where are we going to find 1 million, 2 million, 5 million? Or if we did the whole thing, you know, up to 17 million or whatever the total dollar amount is? Where do we find that money? And we could find it. But the only fair way to find it would be to do an equal, over the entire city, cut in budgets. And I'm not sure that I would be in favor of seeing that kind of thing happen. I don't mind having additional discussions to see where those numbers fall. But I do believe that just saying, yeah, we need to just cut it and just do it, I think we need to spend this amount of time and energy to thoroughly investigate, how would this budget cut affect our city departments? And if, as a council, we determine that that effect would be too much, then perhaps we need to rethink it. So at this point in time, I'm not opposed to do an additional study, but I would, I believe, no matter what we do, it's got to be thorough. It can't be just a, oh, here's the dollar amount. Do you want to do it or not? No, we need an answer. Where are these budget cuts going to happen? And we need to make that decision as council before we say, yes, let's do it. Thank you, Mayor.
Ms. Reyes, can you tell me, on $100 at a grocery store, how much are we talking about tax? Food tax?
Mayor, members of the council, on $100, well, the tax rate is 2.5%. So on $100, is that $2.50? $2.50. I'm not very good at doing math in my head. That's been well documented, Mayor. $2.50.
So $2.5 on $100?
Well, I'm going to do the math on the calculator. $100.
Okay, so I don't know what the average is for most households. My wife and I typically don't go to the store, because I know every time I go there, I'm going to spend money. But when we do, we usually end up spending about $250. So we're maybe $0.75 you're talking about.
It's $2.50, Mayor. I believe I was right. So on $100, it's 2.5% is $2.50.
Okay, so if it was $5 a week, or $20 a month, or $240 a year? I guess the question you have to ask yourself is, are we willing to eliminate that? Because if you eliminate that, you have to have income somewhere else. Everything that we talk about, every time we have a workshop, is we're always trying to provide community service, and it costs money. We have to pay for that. Just as simple as that. Everybody here knows that we have to pay for that. So if you eliminate it somewhere, you have to pick it up somewhere else. So if an average person spent $200, the quickest, easiest way is to say, well, let's just raise property tax, because we don't do that. We haven't raised property tax in seven years, I believe. So that's an option. I mean, we could raise property tax, but I don't know what the law is as far as allowing us to use that money to come back and, if it could go into the same pot, I don't know. But that's an option. But anytime you cut anywhere, I don't care what anybody says, no matter how bad you want it or think it, you either have to eliminate your costs or you have to increase your funds somewhere else. There is no other way of doing it. There's no other way of doing it. That's just budget 101. So my question, Councilmember Aldama, is, if you want to eliminate the tax, if it's that important, then why don't you tell us where the money needs to be saved and what we're willing to cut somewhere else? Because I haven't heard anybody else talk about not doing these projects that we keep doing. Our constituents love it. We hear it from them every day. Boy, you're doing a great job in the parks. You're doing a great job on the roads. You're doing a great job with picking up ball traffic. People love, nobody's complaining to me about food tax. Although I can see if you're on a very limited income and you're struggling to pay your bills, I can see how that could be problematic. But would you rather have a higher food tax and a higher, I'm sorry, a higher property tax and then have your landlord charge you more on rent? And so did you make up anything by doing that?
Mayor, if I may?
Please.
Yeah, thank you. So I don't want to be facetious here, but asking me to tell this council where to save the money would be like asking you, sir, for you to find out and tell me where you're going to, how you're going to find ways to get tiny homes in this city for your item of interest. So I take offense to that. That's why we have the subject matter experts to do that work for us, because we are not the subject matter experts. That's why I utilize, folks, the item of interest process and policy for my item, not for me to tell you. I didn't say I have the answers. I said it's worth studying. And absolutely not, do I want to raise your property taxes the mayor suggested might be an option to offset the reduction of a tax, a food tax? Absolutely not. And this is not about saving $2.50 for our citizens. This is telling our citizens we're taking a conservative approach in reducing a tax that you've had for years. This is the time. In 2022, in 2122, 0.1% savings was about $658,000. You do the math. You divide that up by every single budget in this city. It's minuscule. But it's huge when you tell the citizens of Glendale that we've reduced a food tax to you. That's what I'm talking about. Don't talk about $2.50. So all I'm asking is what Councilmember Melner and Tomachoff said. Let's have a conversation. That's all I'm asking. I'm not even saying reduce the tax this year. I'm saying let's have a conversation. Let's bring the experts to the table and say, here's how much we need to cut. Here's where we can possibly cut it, and we can do it over a 10-year, 12-year. I'm just saying let's have the conversation. I'm not saying do it this year. Nobody ever said do it this fiscal year. And again, and I'll repeat myself, this does not have, public safety does not have to be the target of a reduction. Absolutely not. And raising your property tax is not a solution.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Well, I agree. I don't think it is a solution. I think where we're going is working just fine. I don't believe in cutting something that's working for us now until we have a new way to fund the very things that we want to fund. We're either spending so much money or we figure out a way to raise more money. My tiny home solution actually doesn't cost the city any money.
I didn't say it did, sir.
It's a bad comparison. But anyway, I understand what you're trying to accomplish. I'm not going to support moving this thing forward. I'm not going to support people talking about the possibility of losing jobs. Coming into Christmas time, people worrying whether they'll have a job next year or not. I think right now, the status quo is fine. If the legislature comes out and tells us that that's going to be the law, and the governor signs that bill and it becomes fact, then we're going to have to figure out some way to either cut or raise taxes, one or the other. There is no other solutions, period. Go ahead.
I would speak to two points. The reason people are struggling is not because of Glendale's policies. They're national painful policies. Inflation is as high as it's been in 15 or 20 years. It's terrible. So I think that's a nonstarter in terms of discussion. But I want to remind everyone, what makes up the majority of our operational budget? Public safety. 60% or better of our operational budget goes for public safety. You cannot sit here with a straight face and tell me there will be no cuts to public safety when it is the lion's share of our operational budget. You don't know the answer, and neither do I. But I'm telling you that that would have to be on the table because it is the majority of our operational budget. I am not interested in moving forward. As the mayor said, we may be forced to by the legislature. And if so, we'll cross that bridge when we come to it. But Glendale is finally catching up. After the recession, going back to 2007, 2009, we're finally catching up on roads, on parks, on the things that our citizens value. And to turn around and say, well, for $2.50 on every $100 that you're going to save, we need to cut the food tax and cut our operational budget? Doesn't make sense. We're finally catching up and doing the things that should have been done and could not have been done after the recession. So I am not in favor of moving forward with this discussion, and I agree with the mayor.
Mayor, if I may?
Mr. Turner, let him go.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I can't support the deep, the big bite of 762 man-hours, but I don't think that's exactly what Vice Mayor was asking for, anyway. I am interested in the smaller question of the 80 hours and maybe a little bit more under my concept. I don't think it's responsible for us to look at any of these sales taxes individually in isolation. I think what we need to do is look at our whole sales tax picture holistically, cohesively, so that we better understand it and so that our residents better understand it. I remember a few years ago, prior to COVID, we had a series of deep-dive workshops on a number of different topics that helped educate the council and our residents on annexation policy and many other things. And I think this is certainly something that's ripe for us to take a look at. I mean, there are pros and cons to maintaining all the income we have. There's pros and cons to cutting taxes. Which tax, if we're going to cut, makes the most sense? I don't know that we can decide without looking across the board at all of it. You know, the food tax is a very sensitive and hot-button item for a lot of people. But it occurs to me that, you know, the poorest in our community that perhaps are on what used to be called food stamps, I don't think they pay food tax at all. And so that comes into play. Other people in our community that are renters instead of owners are paying tax on their rental payment each month, rental payment each month, which is a lot more typically, I would think, a lot bigger than their food budget. But some people don't pay rental tax at all because they don't rent. But everybody buys food, so maybe keeping the food tax is more fair across the board. You know, we have a promise of sorts out there to reduce our overall sales tax, the seven tenths of a percent that we're added to a few years ago, added under the idea that we would, that it would be sunsetted. And then when the sunset came off, which was before my time, but the concept was it would be looked at every year. Well, we looked at it, I think, one year as a standalone discussion, and we haven't done that since. So I think we really need to look holistically at our sales tax situation, make sure we're all up to speed on it, that staff's up to speed on it. We know the history of each of these taxes and who they impact in our community. And then if we decide we can do something about it, then we can look at the big picture. But that also gives us time to prepare ourselves for whatever the legislature might be talking about doing, whether it's the food tax or the rental tax, or one or the other. And we might actually learn that we have a preference for one or the other, and might want to advocate responsibly down at the state legislature for what would be best for our residents. So I would like to see us do a nice, you know, robust, one-item-only workshop on our full tax picture sometime between now and the time that the next budget starts. Not the one we're working on right now, but the next one. That'd be the 25, fiscal '25, '24, '25 budget, I think. And so that we know where we stand on all of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Turner's right. It does exclude EBT, but the fact remains, just because you're not on, just because you're not on food stamps doesn't mean you can't be poor. I can tell you that right now. Plenty of people are suffering they're not on food stamps, so. But you are correct. And I don't disagree with the councilman that we should look at our sales tax holistically. It was one of my councilmember items of interest to have the sales tax looked at every single year. And you're right, councilman, it only happened one time. And then I just want to be clear, because the mayor mentioned it's Christmas and we don't want employees to fear losing their jobs. Let's stop right there. No one is losing their job. There's no one implying that City of Glendale employees are at risk of losing your job. I'm not going to be the one on tomorrow's headline news that I want to end the sales tax that will result in losing your jobs. You work for the City of Glendale. You're working for the City of Glendale at the right time. Councilmember Clark is absolutely right. We are doing absolutely well. That's the best time to tell your citizens, we realize we have a food tax, we want to incrementally reduce it. But first, we want to workshop and just study it. There's nothing wrong with that, folks. There's nothing wrong with that at all. But to the City of Glendale employees, as I look into that camera, your job is not at risk. You're working for a good organization, a wealthy organization that's doing well, and we provide good services because of you. You are not losing your job. Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor. I do think that especially in light of seeing what the priorities are for the leadership in the legislature this cycle, that we would be, I think, wise to have this discussion, at least to take a look at, and I agree with Councilmember Turner, look at the rental tax, look at the food tax, look at our sales tax, our overall, how much, where does that fit in with our budget? And whether we do anything or not, I think for, I would rather be way more educated on where we stand with all, take a holistic look at our sales tax, so that in the event we have to be nimble with our budget, I mean, we probably wouldn't be till next fiscal year, but at least we're well informed as to exactly where we stand with all of these different taxes that we have. So, I mean, I've seen the priorities in the House and the Senate. These are priorities for leadership, but the legislature is to remove these taxes. So I, well, we're not saying we're going to, you know, the cut 2.5% sales tax out of our budget today or next year, but taking a look at where, how this all fits together in our operating budget, I feel like is a wise thing to do. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
Councilmember Hugh?
Thank you, Mayor. Our employees get paid one way by taxes. That's the revenue that the city gets. We don't, we're not making goods and selling them as a profit like companies do. We receive taxes to support our employees. If you reduce taxes, you have to reduce how you spend them, which would be on our employees. And I don't want to be discussing that. The City of Glendale has come a long way since some of us came on the council. Councilmember Clark was here when you guys were bankrupt.
Yep.
And the mayor came on, and how many millions were we short when you became mayor? 20 million? 26 million in the hole? The city's come a long ways with great people running the city and with the council making wise decisions, but you start reducing money coming in, you got to reduce who's working here. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Clark?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor?
I think the point needs to be made over and over again, that when you start talking about eliminating the sales tax on food, it affects our operational budget, and 60% of our operational budget is public safety. So I keep hearing that this is not going to affect employees in any way. Well, that may or may not be true. I don't know. And neither does the Vice Mayor know that. But to put that out as a possibility, I mean, we could go back to recession days and tell all the departments that they have to reduce their budget expenses by 10%. Now, it's discretionary. It's up to them to figure out how to reduce that budget by 10%. It could be employee by employee, or it could be by purchasing goods for the department, or it could be by reducing some of the operational functions that the department does. But it will affect each and every department, each and every department. And that's what concerns me. We see layoffs nationally all the time, especially the tech companies and the data companies. They're laying off people hand over fist. I don't think that's the appropriate message to be sending to the employees of our city when we have a robust future ahead of the city. There are still things in the pipeline that no one is aware of that are going to put Glendale on the map, and that are going to create the opportunity for greater sales tax. I think when those opportunities are realized, that's the time to look at whether there should be a discussion of reducing food tax in general. Because I think there are still opportunities out there that can create further ongoing funding that will make it possible to look at the issue. I don't think this time is right to look at that issue. I think in the future, in a year or two, yes, but right now, no. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Tom Chaff, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I looked, I just looked up, our operating budget was 286 million minus the taking everything. I went back to the prospectus. So, and I think the idea that we're talking about literally cutting the tax is not what the conversation is. The conversation is to have a discussion and take a look at it and be well informed rather than driving, you know, driving a car with a blindfold over your eyes and your finger crossed, just taking a full-on look at where we are with our sales tax. So nobody's saying that we're, you know, whether we decided, whether it would be decided to say phase it out over 10 years or something like that, which is, you know, that's the discussion, the idea that I had brought up last year. But just for the context, to talk about the doom and gloom, about people losing their jobs, if you were to reduce the budget, the $286 million budget by 1/10, a tenth of it, $1.7 million, that's 0.00, 0.0006% of the budget. It's not very much money. And on a department with a $10 million budget, it's $6,000. It's not a lot of money. So it's not necessarily, it doesn't have to be doom and gloom, but, you know, I feel like it's always better to be well informed. And whether I would support going forward with any idea on how to, I'm not saying that I'm even supportive of it. I'm just saying I'm willing to have the discussion. So I don't see any harm in having the discussion, and I think honestly, it would behoove us to have the discussion so we have a really well-informed look at our sales tax going into this next legislative session, so we know if we have to make cuts, we have a pretty good idea of where we are.
Mayor?
Vice Mayor, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, Councilmember Hugh, I, sir, I have a lot of respect for you, sir. You know that. But the message isn't here that we're going to lose jobs. In 2122, reducing incrementally by 0.1%, so 1/10th, was $658,000. Ms. Reals? Mr. Phelps, one of you. Are we going to lose jobs if we have to cut $658,000 from the budget over every budget? Is that an amount that would send fear through us that we're going to lose positions, lose jobs?
Mayor, members of the council, that is not a very easy question to answer, and that's the reason why this is a complicated issue that takes a lot of time to analyze. It would be difficult to answer that and say, no, we will not lose jobs. Just for the sake of kind of the argument, it could mean not necessarily cutting jobs, but not giving pay raises. Well, then you're going to lose people and not be fully staffed. We already have issues in some positions within the city where we're having trouble attracting and retaining employees. And so, again, that's just one scenario. And what I'm saying is, we have to look at all of those scenarios, and every department has to look at them themselves and then decide, okay, where could I cut? But it's going to impact someone. In some cases, it may be positions that need to be cut. In other cases, it may be positions that needed to be added that can't be added now. And so that's the reason, again, and these are just examples, and I'm just trying to illustrate, that's the reason why it's a very complicated question, because it's going to vary department by department. Hopefully that answers your question.
That does help. And again, this council has the ability to say, we are not cutting jobs. We are not using public safety as the target. We have the ability to do that. And I disagree. I don't think $658,000 would result in losing jobs or roles. And Councilmember Hugh, you are correct. Councilmember Clark was here when the city was looking at bankruptcy, of course. We were in debt with Cowback Ranch and still are. We were paying out, out of a bank account we didn't have for a sports franchise. Yeah, we were sinking. Yeah, there's quite a bit. It's still there. And I'm not sure how long it's going to take to solve Cowback Ranch, but we ain't making money on that thing. So yeah, there was that happening. And we are doing well now, and now is the prudent time to take a look at this. It's a simple request to study it and see where we're at. Hey, I may not have been, I may not have been supportive. I may not support my own item of interest when I see the results. Study it. Let's look, let's have a conservative approach to the way we do business and our taxes. That's all I'm asking. Look at it. You may come back and say, here's what's going to happen. I might tell you, no, I don't want to do it.
Mayor?
I'm asking you to study it. That's all I'm asking.
Mayor?
Mr. Hugh? I'll go one last time. I'll point out, 43rd Avenue Northern, very busy grocery store. I see one of our police officers worked there. It's so busy. 43rd and Bethany, our side, very, very busy grocery store. I want to thank Phoenix for helping us by paying all that food tax and not fleeing from that store. Costco on Bell Road, thank you Peoria. People shop and buy groceries there at a large number. I don't see people boycotting our grocery stores because I think they get a better deal anyplace else. They're extremely busy. As you can tell, I'm not in favor of doing anything at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. I would point out two things. For the councilmembers who have referred to being better informed, read your budget book. Everything you want to know about sales tax and how it affects the city's operational budget is in there. It's very detailed. That's point number one. Point number two, Vice Mayor keeps saying, well, we will not cut any jobs. I promise you, we will not cut any jobs. Okay, so we don't cut any jobs, but we don't hire any new people. We don't give out pay raises. We cut, a department cuts its operational costs in other ways. Maybe instead of buying 100 widgets, which it needs, now it only buys 50 widgets and is short on the widgets that it needs. Again, this is something, and maybe Councilmember Hugh said it best, and the mayor said it. Nobody is beating down my door and saying, oh my God, you've got to cut the food tax right now. People are worrying about bigger things. They're worrying about how much gas they can afford to buy and whether it's going to be gas or groceries. So why aren't they running this state and saying, there's, I don't know, 75 cents a gallon state tax on every gallon of gas? Boy, if you wanted to save money, you'd be petitioning the state legislature to reduce the gas tax. You'd save more money that way. It's not an issue of our making at this time. I accept that people are suffering. We're all suffering, especially if you're on a fixed income like we are in our household. Things that we normally did, like go out and eat a lot, we don't anymore because it's too expensive. It's easier and cheaper to cook at home. So I am sympathetic to the fact that everyone is suffering economically, but that doesn't mean that we should now impose pain on our operations to make people feel better right now. Because for the amount of money that will be saved, it will be at a great cost to the operation of the city. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor? Yeah. Okay. I'm not going to do this all down. Go ahead.
Oh, I was quitting apart.
Oh, okay. Good.
Well, thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Mayor. Well, if I was sensitive, I might be offended that Councilmember Clark would accuse me of not reading my budget book, but I know, she knows I do read the budget book.
I know you read the budget.
So it must have been some of you folks that she was saying, doesn't read the budget book. And maybe you ought to be offended for having your reputations tarnished. But there's questions raised here today at this dais and out in our community that the answers are not in the budget book. And I would, I believe that I've heard from councilmembers that they would like to go forward with a discussion on this subject in a holistic fashion. And Mayor, I'd like to see if there's a consensus to do that, and if so, then we can move on.
Yeah, I'll get there when I get there. I'm going to talk first. Is that all you have?
Well, and I say that, Mayor, because sometimes you don't ask for a consensus, and therefore it's unclear to staff whether there was a consensus, and then we have to go dig back through the meeting minutes to determine it. So I'm saying, before we leave this, let's see what there's.
I'd like to know when I've never asked for a consensus.
I'm sorry?
When have I never asked for a consensus?
What's the date of that meeting, Councilmember Tom Chaff?
It was the five-year forecast in January where there was five of us. That wasn't the topic, but that was, there was some confusion that there was no, according to the city manager, there was no council consensus to have the discussion. So that's where that came from.
Okay. Well, at any rate, I plan on going there. I wasn't ready to go there yet. I was going to speak first. And I can only, I mean, we can just keep doing this all day long, but it doesn't make any sense. The fact is, if you cut taxes, you have to figure out some way to get more income. The city doesn't have the capacity of selling things. We don't have the opportunity like a business where you can go out and perform things for hire. If we do that for other cities, we're typically doing it at our cost to help another city because we know that they also do that for us. So if we're going to make cuts and we want to keep the same services that we have now, I'm just saying, you, all of you, need to be thinking about, what am I willing to give up, or what am I willing to charge extra for somewhere else? There's no other way around this. It's just simple. We have citizens suffering. We all suffer from paying the higher taxes, but so does the city. The city's paying a lot more for what it paid for two years ago. So I don't know how you can think that we can come back and lower taxes on one thing when we're already paying more. And we don't know how much longer this is going to last. The economy turns south, and maybe prices will get cheaper. Maybe it won't be a problem, but nobody has any money with the way the recession's starting to turn out. It's making a difference in people's lives. So I'm not ready to move forward with the council item of special interest. It was portrayed that it is going to be a tax cut. That's what was portrayed in the newspaper. That's the way it was touted. That's the way it was talked about. I'm not willing to do that at this point. I think in the future, I think that the city does need to have some discussion on the fact of how the taxes all intermingle, how they make a difference, what we can do differently. But bottom line is, we have needs and we have wants. We've got to figure out what do we want and what do we need and what's most important to us. And that's where you're going to figure out what you have to spend on. So I am asking for a consensus. Is there a consensus to move this forward?
Could I provide maybe just some thoughts to help bring this conversation to where we can kind of act on it?
You can.
Excellent. Thank you. So one opportunity would be the five-year forecast, which really kicks off our budget process. So we could, what we'll want to know is, do you want to have a separate conversation outside of the five-year forecast? That's an important part because we not only look at the next year's projected revenue, we really, we look at every single revenue source, not just taxes, but permit fees and other associated revenues, and we project it out for the five years. Now, part of that, then, the revenue, that's easy to do, and we can come back and provide information on what we are forecasting based on models that have been developed both internally and primarily externally by experts. We can clearly provide the council at that point, at the five-year forecast workshop, what it's going to look like for the five years. But if you recall, what we do at that workshop is we also do some other things that are, I think, are important to note. We also then look at our expenses, our forecasts for expenses. We also then look at our expenses, our forecasts for expenses. So what we try to do there, then, is we look at, for example, we'll take our known existing labor contracts. Normally, we'll do multiple year on labor contracts. So we'll try to show what we believe the current trend line is for looking at the increases to expenses like labor cost, our benefit cost. We'll try to project that out. If you recall, at the last two, five-year forecast, staff came with a lot of concerns around our risk management fund. For example, you know, we've had to add several million dollars out of our general fund to support the risk management. So we try to then outline kind of some of these things that are looming down the road, which are really important. If there are any mandated programs. So often in local government, we are told what to do and a service that we have to provide. So we would try to look at anything that maybe the legislature is a new cost being passed on to the cities, that we'd want to look at that. We also would look at inflation. And that's been obviously one that's in everybody's mind lately. Because while our non-new annex growth was strong last year, it did not reach the rate of inflation. So then that kind of can create a gap between where inflation is at and where the new revenues. Then we try to look at, we try to outline some of the goals that we've heard from the council and try to show you what we think the impact of some of those initiatives are. So a few years ago, the pavement management program was a high priority of the entire council. So we tried to anticipate what that program would cost so that when you're looking at the five-year forecast, you're not only looking at the revenue, but you're starting to look at some of the things that will start, you know, limiting your options for how you do your budget. You want to have increased parks maintenance. So that would be another example where we tried to include every year in our five-year forecast additional park staff to meet the council's goal of having increased maintenance in the parks. So we try then in our five-year forecast, also try to align council goals and then try to put a number to that and try to at least kind of, you know, map that out. Then we try to look in the future.
Mayor, if I may... No, no, let him finish.
Point of order here.
Let him finish.
Well, point of order.
Well, I'm not...
It's not...
I'm going to let him finish.
I have a point of order, sir.
Mr. Phelps, please finish.
I have a point of order?
No.
City Attorney, do I have a point of order? Should the mayor recognize my point of order?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, to the extent there's a point of order, if there is a majority of the council would like to overturn the decision of the mayor, they may do so on a vote. Otherwise, it's the decision of the mayor that moves forward.
I'd like to ask the council to support me on a point of order. I just have a question of the mayor.
I figured your question could be answered when he was finished.
I'm just asking if the council will support me on a point of order.
Is there a support of Mr. Eldama?
No. Okay, thank you.
Please finish, Mr. Phelps.
So, and then the final thing, we try to look at some of the, you know, future things that we're hearing, we maybe don't have a number on. So I would always want to say, part of a budget discussion and looking at your revenues, you would look at things, for example, the homeless initiative. We currently are working, because of the direction of the council, on coming back with a series of recommendations on how we may address the growing homelessness issue. We don't have a number on that yet, but we do think that there's going to, we likely in our five-year forecast would say that if the council's wanting to, you know, put more energy around this program, you know, it could result in a program cost of X to Y, would give a wide range. So we would try to look at some of these projected initiatives that might be coming down the line. We would talk, we'll probably talk about 400E with the potentiality of the sun setting in '25. We need to start looking into our transportation budget in our years '25 through '29, which would be part of our five-year forecast because of the potentiality of the reduction. Doesn't say it's going to happen, but we want to share that information with the council so that as you deliberate your budget, that you're doing it kind of knowing all these items. We would look at kind of still the short gap on our CIP funding. We would, you know, we'll try to always highlight what's funded, what's not funded. And so all those things would come into part of our five-year forecast. And so, you know, that might be a time to do this, or you could do it as a separate workshop to go into there. So again, we just, you know, we can provide you whatever information, but as a rule, the five-year forecast is an excellent time to really start, you know, seeing things and cumulative effects of budget decisions that the council makes.
All right, now, go ahead.
Just asking for consensus.
What?
Just asking for consensus. Forget what I was going to ask now. I'm just asking for consensus. Are we moving forward or not?
Any other questions? Okay, so is there a consensus to move forward with Councilmember Eldama's first recommendation?
No.
Which is a discussion?
To have a discussion?
A workshop discussion.
What it says here, the purpose of this item is to follow up Vice Mayor's council item of special interest on potential reduction or elimination of city cell tax on food or home consumption, FFHC. If there's not a consensus on that, is there a consensus for what Mr. Phelps recommended in the five-year?
Mayor, if I may be clear, my request is for staff to bring back the information requested to have a robust conversation on a reduction of tax. And I'll even take Councilmember Turner's suggestion, do it holistically of all of our tax, not just the food tax, but as long as the food tax is part of it. It's a conversation. It's a workshop. It's a discussion for us to learn, for us to know. That's what it is.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'm confused. The, because I don't know what's going on anymore. The CIOSI says clearly, potential reduction or elimination of food tax. So I thought that's what you were asking for consensus on. Do we move forward with that or not? If there's another idea, that should be considered separately from what was presented, which is potential reduction or elimination of food tax. I do not support a discussion on this. If we want to, at the time of the five-year forecast, talk about sales tax in general, I could support that.
As presented by city manager?
Pardon?
As presented by city manager?
Yes. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
So the presentation does on item number four talk about specifically the dollar amount of revenue loss for each 1% of a potential tax increase would be provided then in the five-year forecast? We could look at what that number is and how that would, what effect that would have on the budget? Is that what we're...
We could do that.
Mayor, members of the council, yes, we can do that.
Okay.
Okay, and then my final question is, how much extra work does that require with the five-year included in this? Are you already covering a lot of that at the same time?
Mayor, members of the council, that is what Mr. Phelps said. We look at all of that during the forecast. We can provide that information.
Okay, should you have a question?
You look like you're going to ask for a consensus on my suggestion.
What?
I have a question as to whether you're going to ask, I'm waiting for you to ask for a consensus on my suggestion.
I'm trying to get the first one done. I didn't hear anything on that.
Well, are we...
This agenda item, I'm not in favor of moving forward on it.
Okay, so I did not hear a consensus on Councilmember Eldama's original idea.
Yes. To have a workshop on potentially reducing or eliminating the food tax, bringing back the information that we need. Yes, it's a study session.
Okay, I didn't hear a consensus.
Potential. Well, ask.
I'll ask again. Is there a consensus? I do not hear one.
No.
Okay, so what was yours?
Mine was to have a holistic look at all of our sales taxes so that we, well, basically, or we can go back to the minutes. I think everybody here...
Wouldn't that be included in what, I'm sorry, city manager just said, with the five-year plan included?
No, not necessarily. I'm looking at something more extensive than that, that discusses some of the questions that are raised in here that were specific to the food tax, but also apply to our other taxes. How did they, how did they get created? Those sorts of things. You know, who does the food tax apply to? Who do the other taxes apply to?
Mr. Phelps? Can that all be included? I'm trying to save you folks from doing work two or three times.
Mayor, members of the council, yeah. What I would say is this, if you're pushing towards having this discussion, will one, allocate more time in the five-year budget workshop, on the five-year forecast budget workshop? We can also then take, if we know in advance what information, kind of specific information you're looking for, we'll do our best to get that information and have it presented as part of the five-year forecast. So I would just say, you can send Ms. Rios, you know, if you said, I'm looking specifically for, what year did we enact the tax? We'll do our best to try to figure out what that was. Or if you're asking applicability, I think Councilmember Turner, you mentioned, you know, how does it get applied? Just let us know kind of what you're looking for. We can do that as part of the five-year forecast. We can do it as a separate workshop. I was just trying to get clarity as to what, you know, where you wanted to go with this discussion. But any information that you want to have, just let us know, and we will do our best job to present that information.
Okay, so my other question is, at what point would you be ready for this five-year plan where we could all be briefed on it and talk about it and work it?
Mayor, members of the council, it's scheduled for January.
Okay, so that should be soon enough, then? And that gets you all your questions? You can give them to them?
I'll make my best effort. I think council members have concerns as well.
Everybody can tell her what they need. Is there a consensus for that item?
Yes.
Yes.
Looked like we have it. Okay, does that help you?
It does.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Rios. Item number four?
Discussion of a potential 2023 special election for geo bond authority.
Mayor, members of the council, here to make the presentation is our newly appointed Director of Budget and Finance, Mr. Levi Gibson.
If I can figure out how to turn this mic on. Here we go.
It's on.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We'll wait to get the presentation up, and then we'll begin. So this presentation is regarding the potential of a geo bond special election for 2023. Our agenda that we'll cover during this presentation is we'll briefly go over overview of geo bonds. We'll talk about the remaining bond authority that we currently have. We'll also talk about the repurposing of bond authority that is available to us for 2023 and 2024. We'll also talk about the pros and cons and a timeline for a potential 2023 election. Additionally, we'll consider some other considerations, and then we'll look to have the council discuss and provide consensus on whether we should proceed down this trail. So just a brief overview of general obligation bonds. These are paid for using a secondary property tax. And wanted to remind the council that you do have a resolution, a council resolution regarding a flat levy. General obligation bonds must be authorized by the voters, and there are constitutional limits based on the net assessed full cash value of all property located within the city. Currently, the outstanding geo debt may not exceed 20% of that net assessed full cash value for combined water, sewer, public safety, streets, transportation, open space, and parks, and 6% for general municipal purposes. The primary levy limit allows you to pay any general fund expense using the primary property tax, and this has an allowable 2% increase per year. The secondary levy limit, it can only be used for debt service on general obligation bonds. And currently, as I said previously, we have a flat levy, and we assume a slight growth within this for new construction that's added to the tax rolls each year. Currently, we have a debt management policy that was adopted by the city council in October of 2020. The city council policy states that we will not authorize the issue of any new geo bonds if the levy amount required to pay the debt service on the existing geo bonds plus the new geo bonds exceeds the amount of the current year's tax levy, plus an amount up to 2% per year for the new growth. And simply stated, that's that equation that's located at the bottom of the slide. This is a visualization of our secondary property tax history from fiscal year 2015 through the current fiscal year 2023. And as you can see, that only has grown slightly based on that flat levy policy. And with that, I'll turn the time over to Ms. Rios.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gibson. So, Mayor, members of the council, what I've done here is just an illustration to show that with the flat levy policy, the sales, excuse me, the secondary property tax doesn't really keep up with inflation. So what I've done is, the sort of gray bars, and in almost every case, there are the lower bars here, shows the amount of the tax levy that increased due to growth. So, and they're in thousands of dollars. So literally, in like fiscal year 15, the property tax grew by $62,000, if that makes sense. Had you taken the prior year's levy and applied that year's CPI to it instead, just again for illustrative purposes, the tax levy would have grown by $285,000. And so the growth doesn't, the point of this is, with a flat levy policy, the growth doesn't really keep up with, even with CPI. And so I've just shown that to you year over year. Why we're really here, and I think it's important to note, is that this is a graph showing our current general obligation bond debt service every year. And so we have the opportunity, and we identified this opportunity back in 2020, that in 2023, we are paying off a significant portion of that debt. So on the next slide, I'm going to show you kind of how you can still keep the flat levy policy and what we've done to fund projects. So this starts out with the current debt service, which is the same as the one on the previous slide, and then shows you how you can layer in new debt. And this portion of the debt is new debt that we already have authority for and for projects that are currently in the CIP. And then if you layer in, you can create another layer that shows you new debt that you could issue if you had the authority. But you can see that even though you've done that, the levy still is remaining flat. So without violating the policy that you have on a flat levy, you can get new authority and still keep a flat levy and then use that authority to issue general obligation bonds. I thought it might be good for the public and the council to talk a little bit about some of the things we do with general obligation debt. So these are some pictures of the remodeled fire station 152 that costs, we used about 1.3 million in geo debt for that. The remodel of the sign building, it's still in process, but we had used general obligation bond debt for that. That was for the prosecutor's office portion. For streets and parking, it has been a large source of revenue or funding for streets and parking. So 3.5 million for 95th Avenue, more than 3 million for Glendale Avenue, Camelback Road. These are street arterial reconstructions. These are not maintenance projects. And then I went back over the past, I believe this was five years, and looked at all of the, I didn't want to put pictures of every project, but you can see that there's been a lot of road projects to the tune of, if you add those all up, it's about 32 million. And then there are flood control projects. This is the Bethany Home Outfall Channel. About 15 million in flood control bonds were used for that. Then council's familiar with the issue that we had at 83rd and Georgia where some homes were flooding. We used geo bond authority in flood control to do a project there to fix that problem. In Parks and Recreation, we used general obligation debt to build the O'Neill Splash Pad. We used general obligation debt and some general fund money to build the lake at Heroes Regional Park. Park. So again, those are just some projects, not everything that we've used this for. It gives you an idea of the magnitude of having it as a source. This chart shows you the remaining bond authority that we have in some various categories. So starting at the top, in 2020, as council knows and the public may know as well, we went to the voters with a bond election for 9.9 million for the landfill. That did not pass, as we all know. And so now for the landfill, we only have $4.6 million in authority remaining as a source for expansion of the landfill. Within the five-year CIP, your adopted CIP, not any new projects that may be added during this budget cycle, but from the last budget cycle, there's about a little over 14 million in projects. And so you can see there's a gap there. If you take the entire 10-year CIP, it's, there are $19 million in projects. The unique thing about the landfill is that they aren't paid for using property tax, even though we issue them as geo-bonds. They would be paid for by landfill revenue. For Parks and Recreation, we had a question on the ballot. We asked for 87.2 million. Again, did not pass. So what we have remaining in Parks and Recreation is about 6 million, but we have $35 million in projected projects just in the first five years and 84 million in the 10-year CIP. For Streets and Parking, we had a question for 81.5 million. Again, this did not pass. That left, leaves us with only 325,000 in remaining authority. That effectively means we have zero because we can't issue a bond with the costs involved. We just can't use that at all. It's effectively zero. But in the CIP, we have $46.8 million in projects planned. And again, we just, we don't have the authority needed to issue those bonds, nor in the entire 10-year CIP, we have 81, almost 82 million. Oops, sorry. And then finally, flood control. We asked the question of the voters for authority for 9.3 million. We do have 7.6 million remaining, even though the bond, the election didn't pass or the question didn't pass. We have 12.5 million in projects in the first five years of the CIP and 18 in the 10-year CIP. So this is what is sort of creating this opportunity and this idea that should we go forward with another bond election and then the timing of it. I did want to talk a little bit about the next three rows. In open space and trails, we did not take a question to the voters. We have $49.3 million in authority to do open space and trails, but we actually only have $15 million in planned projects in the five-year and 21 in the 10-year CIP. So in this case, it's sort of the opposite of all the others. We have more authority than we have planned to use over the course of the 10 years. Wanted to point out that we did not ask a question about public safety either. In that case, we have 86 million in authority remaining to do public safety-related projects. We have 64 million in the five-year CIP, so we can cover that. But at some point, again, to do all of the 88 million in projects through the 10-year CIP, we will be running out of authority. And at this, at the rate that we're going right now, we project that to be in about fiscal year '27, '28, that public safety will run out of authority. And same thing for the library. We have 16 million. We have in remaining authority, we have 24 million in the five-year CIP. So that's a little bit closer. That one is, we project to run out in around fiscal year '25, '26. So public safety and library are not necessarily in need of a bond election immediately, but they, if we continue down this path, they'll need them, you know, in the future. We just wanted to let you know. I'm actually going to turn this presentation over to Brent Stoddard. He's going to talk about legislation and some other things about bond elections.
Yeah, great. Thanks, Vicky. So as Vicky mentioned on that chart, you kind of see the conundrum of having bond capacity in areas where they are not needed and not having the capacity in areas where they are needed. So the council, as part of your legislative agenda back in 2021, gave direction to our intergovernmental program as manager, Ryan Lee, to go to the legislature and see if there was an opportunity to find some flexibility or creativity to be able to repurpose or reutilize some of that capacity that we have in the city. And so he, working with the sponsor, Representative Bullock, brought a piece of legislation forward that ultimately was passed by the legislature, signed by the governor, that allows the council to call a special election, it doesn't have to be a special election, to allow them to call for the election for the purpose of providing the flexibility of repurposing previously passed bonds and repurposing them for another, another purpose. The legislature put a sunset on that legislation, seeing it as a unique opportunity to assist a city for what we had discussed with them. And so they put a sunset of January 2025 on that piece of legislation. So essentially, we would be coming, the November 2024, 2023, '24 would be the last opportunity that we'd have to do that. So the legislation spells out a couple of specific requirements. First, that it has to be held on the first Tuesday of November, as long as there's a Monday in that month of November, and that's typical for other bond elections. It requires the city within 35 days to have sent a informational ballot to every household who has at least one registered voter at that household. So those are some of the same typical informational requirements that we would provide to our residents anyways. The ballot, the informational pamphlet has to require, has to have information about what the original purpose of those bonds were, when they were originally passed, and then what the new purpose of them was. So you couldn't just tell them what you want to do with it. You have to explain, here's what it was originally intended for, now here's what we're going to repurpose them for. It also specifies some specific wording that the voters will have to see in order to make that choice. It specifically says that you're asking them to change capital improvements, and that would be the question, yes, or to change capital improvements, no. So, and then voters, of course, would have the opportunity on their ballot to determine what their choice is, but that language is specified in that state statute. So the last permitted election date that we could do this is November 5, 2024, because of course, as I'd mentioned, they had had a January 2025 sunset. If we didn't, it's our anticipation that if we didn't take advantage of it, they probably wouldn't renew it. They would probably just say, well, no one was using it, no one's taking advantage of it, you know, let's not keep adding things to state statute. But that's where that stands at this point. So talking a little bit about then a timeline of what that would look like for a 2023 special election based on the statutory guidelines of timelines and when you have to meet posting requirements, notification requirements. A potential timeline would look like March 3, we would notify Maricopa County of our desire to participate and have a special election. June 13, you would adopt a resolution to refer the question to the ballot. Again, the language is spelled out in the state statute of what that would look like. July 14 would be when material be due to provide the information in that publicity pamphlet that's required to go out to every household who has a registered voter. August 19 would then be the last date for any interested parties or residents or businesses to submit for or against statements to the city clerk to be included. And then October 3 is when that publicity pamphlet would be mailed. And then October 11, as we know, is when early ballots are mailed. And then November 7 would be an election date on that 2023 special election. Now, one of the other things to consider is some of the pros and cons of a special election. And this is probably, you know, not anything new or things that the council hasn't seen or considered in the past, but one of the, one of the pros is that voters are informed on one specific issue. So instead of being kind of overwhelmed by a lot of different things and ballot initiatives and other elections going on, they're able to focus and get information about one specific item. Historically, we look back and of those cities that had success in passing bonds, they were held on special elections. Also, it kind of goes back to my first point, kind of that voter fatigue of being overwhelmed or worn out by all of the other things going on. Typically, that's not experienced in a special election like this. Now, of course, some of the cons is we would be paying for an election by ourselves as a special election. So you would probably be looking at a cost of $250,000 for the cost to run and implement that election. And traditionally, looking at voter turnout, it's low, and I guess that's what you would expect. There's not other people being drawn in from other races or issues. And so those that want to participate, the turnout is about that specific item in that election. So, and of course, that's not a comprehensive list of all the pros and cons, but I think those are some, some things to think about as we move forward and the council makes their decision and starts to provide some direction to staff on how we want to proceed. One of the other things that we went out and we talked to some of the other cities or that have been successful in passing bonds over the last few years, and we asked them to kind of walk us through their process. And one of the things that they consistently did for those that were successful is they had engaged a consultant to kind of help them with public relations and community engagement specifically around election type of stuff. Of course, as a city, we're able to provide educational information, we're able to inform the residents of what it is that we're asking them to do. But, you know, that's a science in and of itself of how to do that and how to do it around a bond election and all that. So many of them have brought on some extra help that, people who deal with and work on and are able to help educate us as a city entity about how we are best able to engage with. So that was one of the things that we found. The other is utilizing the role of the bond committee. The council formed a bond committee, kind of for the council to provide direction and work with them on the purpose of them leading and helping to and also inform the public on, on some of that information that needs to get out to the residents. So the question that, all of this material and the information is, does the council want us to continue on the path towards a 2023 special election? The bond committee has recommended that the council do that, but ultimately, it's your authority to give direction or consensus direction that we continue to move down this path and start doing the preparatory work that we need to do that. And then secondly, our recommendation, if there's council consensus, is that we do look to go engage a election specialist or consultant, whatever you may call it, to help us be able to organize, educate, and inform the public in the best way possible. And of course, that individual would be working with city staff. We would then also be working closely with the, your bond committee that you formed, and then they would also then kind of help make recommendations moving forward to the council. So, Mayor, if there's any questions on that part of the discussion, I think we'd be looking for council consensus again to continue to move forward down the path of a November 23 special election on our bonds.
My only question for you is, are we basically giving a consensus that once, once we say go for it, that we're all accepting the fact that we are going to have a special election once we have all the details? Are we going to be, are we going to come back and ask for another consensus?
Mayor, members of the council, I think what I envision would be that we would engage the public relations person and then, once they've done some of this work and they've talked to us, city staff, and then you about their recommendations, they will also recommend whether or not you should go forward. In other words, if public sentiment is such that they're seeing that that's not what they would recommend, then they'll tell you and then you can take that recommendation or not. Hopefully that makes sense.
It sort of does, but no matter what, we all realize that we're going to have to get these bonds. I mean, one way or another, it's just whether it works or not.
One of the things, yeah, one of the things that they would be looking at is the timing.
Yeah.
Mayor, members of the council, so I had conversations with the town manager in Gilbert. Actually, public relations isn't really the skill set we're looking for. What they actually did is they did quite a bit of research to see what were the priorities of the residents in Gilbert as it related to a transportation bond that they were moving forward. So it's not really trying to sell them on the idea as much as reaching out to our citizens, seeing what they prioritize in terms of different things we provide, and then trying to see if there's a consensus. We would then bring back that information and engage back with the council to talk about potential next steps. So it's not really, I know we use the term public relations, it's really more of somebody that is, that will scientifically reach out and talk to our citizens, engage with them. And what Gilbert told me is that what, initially what the council thought would be the priorities of the citizens actually were something different. And so then they were able then to repackage their transportation program to meet and align with the needs of the citizens. And I think that's always a really smart way to move forward. So that's kind of what we're looking for is consensus to engage with this consultant to really do the research, and then we'll have multiple times to check back with the council and kind of look at next steps.
Okay. So it's consensus for the next step, followed probably more than likely by other steps.
That's just continuing that path.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So would the consultant, because one of the things that I've done a little bit of, at least rudimentary research on, a lot of the cities that seem to have success do shorter terms. I think part of, I think we haven't gone out for bond. When was the last time we went out for bond in Glendale?
1996.
It's been a really long time since we've asked our residents to vote in a bond, other than 2020.
Mayor, members of the council, I believe that's 2007 was the last.
Okay. So it's still 13 years, though. So I think, you know, I mean, people are, when they're not used to it, I think they're a lot more skeptical. So I, and I think also, shorter terms are way more specific into what the residents can expect for us to be able to deliver because the CIP's, you know, changed. So would the consultant also find out what the public sentiment is on a maybe, you know, like going out for six years, seven years or something like that, rather than giving people, here's our five-year CIP, but we want 15 years worth of money, so 10 years is kind of pie in the sky idea of what we're going to do with the rest of it, to be able to kind of hone in on more specific deliverables for the bond election? Is that going to be part of what they're going to do?
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Tom Chaff, that's exactly what we can ask the consultant to help us with, is to, is not only look at priorities, but look at then if we were going to fund those priorities, what is, where's their appetite for it? Because what we may find, it could be, you know, we could be totally off. Some people may want longer, maybe shortage. That would be the type of information that we would hope to glean from there. So Brent would head this up and working with the consultant team to make sure the right questions are being asked. So what we want to do is to arm the council with good data that says, is this really something that our citizens would like to see us move forward on? What we don't want to do is to put something on the ballot in November when there's no, maybe no appetite by our citizens to do it, then we've just extended a lot of, you know, resources and energy. So it's really to help us target the next steps. And I know you had mentioned this to me in a prior discussion, and we can very clearly, Councilmember Tom Chaff, ask that question. If we were to do this, what is, you know, how best would you want to fund this?
Okay. Thank you.
It sounds like it's more like we're asking them what do they want, rather than telling them what we want them to want.
Correct.
Yeah. You have a question?
No.
Consensus?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Very good. Last item.
Amendment to the Glendale City Code regarding short-term rentals.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report on our fifth and final action item for today, or agenda item today is Rick St. John, Deputy City Manager.
This is in response to a council item, a special interest from Councilmember Tom Chaff, based on a state law change that occurred in September. So we are seeking council consensus today on amending chapter 29.1 of our Glendale City Code dealing with short-term rental properties. And we'll walk through what the new state law provides opportunity for this council to decide on today. As a reminder, it may have 22 under state laws as it existed at that time. Our council, you adopted 29.1 short-term rental regulations that included a requirement to provide owner information, emergency contact information, to comply with all laws, and it- And it includes some provisions about prohibited uses at short-term rentals, for example, conducting commercial business, selling lists, or housing sex offenders. On September 24th of this year, the governor signed into law different provisions that this council can now consider, including requiring short-term rental owners to get a license or a permit, imposing a civil penalty up to $1,000 against an owner if they refuse to get that permit or provide the necessary information. Fine owners for violations of city-town regulations, state laws, and those fines, as we walk through that, you'll see, could be up to $3,500 for three violations within a 12-month period. And then we can require short-term rental owners to have liability insurance of at least $500,000. What we are proposing today is that we do include in our ordinance or in our code that there is a $1,000 civil fine for every 30 days that a short-term rental owner fails to provide required contact information or obtain the necessary permit or license. So every 30 days that they fail to comply, the city could assess a new $1,000 fine. Violations of the code in a 12-month period for a first offense would be a $500 fine or the equivalent of one night's rental fee, whichever is greater. Second offense is $1,000 or two nights' rental fee, whichever is greater. And third offense is 3,500 or three nights' rental fee, whichever is greater. And it's important to note that one response by the city, based on violations, even if there are multiple violations, that's, that is effectively one count. So that would have to happen three times over a 12-month period to get to that $3,500 mark. Other things that we can do, if the city requires that a short-term rental owner get a permit or license, and we are recommending that we do this, then we have to, in the ordinance, have provisions for an appeal process and outlining the administrative process that a short-term rental owner could appeal those fines. We can also submit to the state and have their TPT license revoked and, or suspended. And reasons for that might include owner, the owner-operator commits a felony on or near the property, there's a wrongful death or serious injury as a result of negligence from an owner or operator, if they knowingly house a sex offender, or if they use the short-term rental for a special event that would normally require a separate permit or license. Other city requirements or state actions, we have to notify the owner when a violation is cited on their property within seven business days, unless the property owner has not provided their information. And then we don't have the information to notify them. We would recommend requiring the 500,000 liability insurance. And as I stated before, the Arizona Department of Revenue can suspend the short-term rental owner's transaction license if there are three violations of our city regulations in that 12-month period. We would have to notify the state of that, though. Some other things, as Mr. Bailey and I were working through this, Mr. Bailey is recommending that we rearrange some of the language in the existing code, and you can see how it would line out, just slight differences, no language changes, just moving around the pieces so it makes better sense from a legal standpoint. And with that, I'm happy to ask, answer any questions you may have.
I do have a question for you. What is the purpose of requiring a half million dollars liability insurance to somebody who owns their property that's leasing to someone else? How, how does the city play into that?
Mayor, members of the council, I believe it would protect against damage being done to city property surrounding that, short-term rental owner's property and then adjacent properties. So if somebody comes into a short-term rental, short-term rental property and violates our fireworks ordinance and causes a fire to occur on a neighboring property, then that insurance would be in place to help protect against damage caused by people occupying that short-term rental.
I, I think that's a stretch. All right, that, that was my only question. Go ahead.
Turn my microphone on. Thank you, Mayor. So what the, I think this is all great, except for knowingly housing a sex offender. That seems like maybe a little.
Hard to prove.
A little vague. Like, how would you, how would you know? Do we require them to check a database or something? Or how do we, unless, if we don't require them to check anything, how would they knowingly be housing a sex offender?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchov, we had this discussion internally, and what I believe that means is allowing somewhere to establish that short-term rental as their primary residence, therefore requiring notification to the neighborhood that they are in the neighborhood, and that notification is based on what level sex offender they are. In short-term rentals, I just don't see that as even a probability. I don't know why it's included in the state law, but it is.
Okay.
And so we included it in May of '22, and it's part of how we can have the state suspend a license currently if we prove that that has occurred on that property.
Okay, so Mayor, it would come into play then if there was, there was a, some sort of incident, and then you'd check and see who the, who the people were that were renting or were, were on the, signing the, the lease, and then one of them, because most of them come from out of state, so I don't even know how, if I was renting to somebody, how would I even know whether they're a sex offender or not?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchov, to your point, they're not required to notify unless they're establishing it as their primary residence.
Okay.
And then there's a requirement to notify. And in a short-term rental, I, I don't see that ever happening.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
My, my only concern is we've got Super Bowl coming. Will any of these new regulations be applicable for Super Bowl? And, and not just the new ones, but the ones we already have on the books? People have no clue. I know that there are people in my district who plan on renting out their houses for Super Bowl. How are we going to get the word out to them that there are these regs and that they need to register or whatever with the city?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, there's a couple of, of aspects to your question. I'll try to address them in order. Number one, will this be in place by the Super Bowl? We have posted these fines in preparation for this conversation, which is a requirement. And if adopted today, the posting will be sufficient by January 10th for this council to adopt it formally and for it to go into effect. It may almost immediately, we can declare an emergency and it can go into effect immediately. And those fines and fees have already been publicly posted, so we've met that requirement. So yes, it would be in place by the time for the Super Bowl. To answer the second part of your question, we have procured a software solution in the open market to help us manage short-term rentals. And that company is telling us that they can make all the necessary notifications well in advance of the Super Bowl, once we're fully implemented, so that short-term rental owners have a sufficient amount of time to get their permit if the council decides to require a permit or license and formally register with the city.
Okay, and, and I would throw this out as a possible suggestion. You know, we have those overhead message boards, like there's one on Glendale Avenue, there might be two on Glendale Avenue. Why can't we use those to advise people that if they're planning on renting out their homes for the Super Bowl, they have to register with the city or putting some kind of message? Everybody drives, everybody will see, see it at one point or another. So have you considered using those overhead message boards?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, not specifically the overhead message boards, but we are certainly talking about how we get the message out into the entirety of our community that this is a requirement. And we can certainly include message boards as part of the conversation.
Okay, and, and I'm sure there will be people who, despite our best efforts, will still not be aware. Are we going to give them a pass the first time? Because it's so close to when the Super Bowl is.
So Mayor, Councilmember Clark, again, a couple of facets to your question. Number one, a lot of people are going to be doing this as a one-time. They're, they're not intending to become a short-term rental in the long term. And so we're internally discussing how we manage that. And we have not come to a definitive conclusion about how we're going to do that. We're going to look at other communities around the country, but certainly here in the state also, about how they're managing those one-offs, those, I'm just going to rent it for one week and then I'm not going to ever do it again. How are those managed? That's number one. And number two, if someone fails to comply, they're, they are a short-term rental, they're using it as a short-term rental, not just for the Super Bowl, but long-term. And they fail to comply once messaged by our software solution. So our software solution will identify.
Okay.
Where the home is, who the, who the owner of the home is, and then who's managing the property. So it may be a VRBO property or some other company that's managing it. Notifications go to everyone, and we would only fine that $1,000 for failure to register if we could prove, or beyond, not necessarily beyond a reasonable doubt, but in our own minds, we believe they're willfully and knowingly not registering with us. And then we would pursue that civil action.
All right, thank you.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. St. John, I'm going to follow up on page six to the point that Councilmember Tomalchov raised about knowingly housing a sex offender, and then also the next point about knowingly allowing a short-term rental to be used for a special event that would otherwise require permits and, and informing the city via license or whatever. So the knowingly is always difficult to establish, and I'm trusting, is it, is the knowingly contained in the state legislation?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, it is.
Okay. Do you believe that we could require managers of these short-term rentals to state in their leases or whatever that, how, that housing a convicted sex offender, you know, would not be allowed or must be disclosed or something like that? And the same thing with inquiring, you know, either is the use for this short-term rental to be, you know, a wedding, a graduation event, you know, something else that would be problematic or, or at least either inquiring if it is or stating that it shouldn't be without proper, you know, that taking the extra step of getting the permit and license? Can we go that, can we go that route?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, I, I don't know that we can require them to include that in their language with their agreements, but we certainly make everyone know, everyone is aware of Arizona law as it pertains to short-term rentals and specifically what Glendale has adopted. And so the software solution that we've procured is a multi-state software solution, not just in Arizona. And on their website, they have each state listed, you can click on the state and review the laws, and, and conversations with the bigger businesses that manage these short-term rentals. I would think that they would know specifically in each state what the laws are, and they would make their owners aware of those laws and make recommendations on how to make sure that they're in compliance with those laws. So a lease in Tennessee, for example, might look different than an agreement in Arizona because of those things. We can certainly engage our software solution provider in that conversation to find out exactly how that's done. But just in the implementation conversation, I believe that's occurring.
Right. Mayor, if I could continue, Mr. St. John. So my concern is that the owners or our peers will adopt, in essence, a don't-ask, don't-tell approach to these two issues. That if they, if they don't ask, you know, then they can always get around that, I didn't know. And so I'd like to see if we, you know, and we may not be able to do it, you know, in the next six, six weeks, but I think with something we should be paying some kind of attention to, and it may take legislative action, that we need, we need to take that end around out of the process, that they actually do have a responsibility to inquire or to state that these two things are problematic in our community. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember, thank you.
Anyone else? Who, who brought this forward?
Councilmember Tomalchov, Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchov, entered the council item of special interest.
I, I didn't know who brought that up. I couldn't find that. What bothers me is, is the, the rush, that, that we have to get this done in 63 days or something like that, when in fact, there's probably people that have already signed a contract with somebody to rent a property. And we can't go retro and say, well, I guess you legally, I guess you could, but I think it's problematic that if, if somebody is cited and we're going, well, you should have known the law, and it's, but at the time, it wasn't the law. I, I just think that, I think that we're, I think that we should have done this six months ago. I, I think right now it's a little problematic. Having it in, in force, maybe it's not such a bad idea, but enforcing it, I think, is going to be problematic. That's just my opinion. We've talked, and I've heard you say it multiple times, that initially, we're, we're just going to educate before we actually start citing on multiple things that we've done. And in this one, we're talking about, no, we're going to cite. So that's my problem with this. Councilmember Tomalchov?
Thank you, Mayor. So the issue is that this, these were just, went into, this just went into effect in the end of September. So when we adopted the short-term rental ordinance, which was, I mean, as the state has allowed a little more oversight, we've, we've adjusted, we, we had adopted the ordinance, I think it said in March. And then, and then this was a result of the last legislative session that went into effect on September 24th. That's why we didn't do it sooner. By the time we, you know, bring it back to a workshop, it's now the beginning of December. I can say that I, I know quite a few people that are short-term rental owners, and that short-term rental owners are supportive of this type of regulation, because they want to remove the bad actors from the short-term rental business. So I've had multiple conversations, I don't know if our staff's done any outreach to short-term rental owners, but short-term rental owners are supportive of the city's regulating, because they don't want bad, that bad actors to, you know, to ruin it for all the good, good short-term rental owners that manage a good property, that are doing things the right way. They don't want to have these nuisance parties and these illegal behaviors happening in rental properties. And I think with the Super Bowl coming, it's probably a bigger concern with possible sex trafficking and things that happen where you're way easier to hide and do that type of thing, where, you know, in a hotel, you're probably much more likely to be noticed if you're doing any kind of illegal activity. And in a residence, it's a lot easier to do it without being quite so noticed. So I, I'm supportive of moving forward with it. Thank you.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. To your point, well taken. So we have some of the Super Bowl renters, as you mentioned, who are probably just one-off, somebody renting out their own home or a rental they happen to have vacant or something like that. And this really is not, I don't think, is pointed in that direction. So a couple of things, if there's not enough votes to attach the emergency clause, then this wouldn't go in effect till 30 days after we passed it, which I think on the calendar would push it past the Super Bowl, but we would still be able to proceed. Or we could put in a delayed effective day for, you know, two days after the Super Bowl or something like that, if we're concerned about trapping people in, who have already been engaged in this process up to now. But I do think that it's important, if we value these principles, it's important that we continue with them, because what we're, the timeframe we're in right now is not so much booking for Super Bowl, it's booking for spring break, it's booking for summer vacation, those sorts of things. And I think that we need to get these, this ordinance updated on the books so that it applies to these contracts that are going to be entered into within the next, you know, few weeks or couple of months. Thank you.
Any other discussion? There are none. Is there a consensus for them to move forward?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. City managers report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, four quick items to report out. I'm going to circulate this, maybe if, Julie, you can get this down to Councilmember Turner. We're going to be tomorrow in Murphy Park, we're going to be installing a display as part of the Super Bowl. And this is designed to kind of create what they call an Instagrammable moment. So with all the people that are visiting our downtown during the holidays, it'll give them a chance to get their picture taken in front of this display. It's about 12 feet wide by almost four feet high, and we're going to keep it there through, through our downtown glitters program, and then we'll transfer, once we shut down the holiday lights, we're going to transfer it to the airport and use that as a welcoming platform for all of our corporate jets that'll be flying in as part of the Super Bowl activities. And so again, we're excited about this program. Staff's done a great job of helping to work with our host committee to make that happen. Second item is, you know, we, we all know in this room about what a great public safety team that we have here in Glendale. And so recently, we, we went through an accreditation, and our forensic unit has been awarded the accreditation by the American National Standards Institute as part of the National Accreditation Board. Now, what's significant about this accomplishment is several things. One, we're the only Arizona agency without a lab, and normally accreditation. One, we're the only Arizona agency without a lab, and normally accreditation requires to have a lab to receive this recognition. But the review board who conducted the assessment was so impressed with our policies and procedures that we had in place, and were very, very complimentary of our police department. They are also a little bit surprised at how well we did, considering this was our first attempt at accreditation, which is, if you've been in the accreditation world, you know, it normally takes sometimes several attempts to really to get the information conveyed. So again, something our department, and I hope this council's proud of, they've done a great job, and we do want to recognize all the work that they did in getting accredited. Third thing, other good news, is today, there was an announcement that I wanted, that we've been kind of talking about internally a little bit with the council, but it's now official. If you recall, back in roughly 2018, we opened up our first new car dealership in the city of Glendale with Arrowhead BMW. Over the next couple of years, we, we saw Arrowhead Volvo get built, we saw the new Jaguar and Land Rover dealerships open up, and we saw the Tesla get opened up in the, in the Westgate area. And today, they announced our yet newest brand coming to the city of Glendale, and Porsche Arrowhead has been officially announced. It's, the owner is the, owns the Chandler Porsche dealership, very, a very quality ownership team with a great reputation. They've got a great building they're planning on erecting. It will be next to the Arrowhead Cadillac on the vacant parcel, kind of wedged between the new Carvana vending machine and Arrowhead Cadillac right on Bell Road. We've been told that they hope to submit their building plans and permits, so they'd like to be under construction early second quarter of the coming year, so it's only about four months away, with an opening anticipated somewhere in the first quarter of next year. Again, a very high-end dealership, it's a very innovative company. Of all the European manufacturers, they're pushing probably the hardest toward electrification and EV vehicles. And so we think this is a great add-on, and we're welcoming the team from, that will be building this. Finally, in, as consistent with the city council's policy regarding the disposition of city-owned property, I want to notify the council that my office has received an unsolicited offer to purchase city property, and we will be discussing that in executive session. And that is my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
We'll be discussing them in executive session. Thank you.
Council item, special interest, I'll start off with Councilmember Clark.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Hugh?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Melner?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Councilmember Turner?
Not today, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay, well, I'm not going to blow that. I'm not going to do it either. Okay. Motion to go into exec.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion, I have a second. Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same name, period, you guys have it, do have it. Council meeting is recessed for exec.